Good evening. This is the March 13th regular meeting of the Flemington Borough Council. Meeting's being held in historic Boardhouse. Meeting's also being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. All rise please for the twenty seconds. My pleasure. The United States of America, and I am the public for which this stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, and every living and just for all. Okay, please pull it up, Sally.
Mr. Gordon?
Here.
Mr. Gordon?
Here.
Mr. Payne?
Here.
Mr. Wood?
Here.
Mr. Sweeney?
Here.
Mr. Stinkle?
Here. Thank you. Susan Peterson said that she'd steal. You should be fine right there. Before we start, I see a few people are standing at the back. We do have several seats interspersed in the regular audience. There are, if more people come in, there are chairs here, there's the jury of officers, and the balcony is essentially empty just for... There are pretty few left here right now. So we have plenty of additional seating at this point. We do only have one microphone. We tried to get a second one today, but we're not successful. So we will pass it back and forth up here. If possible, if you have questions or comments and can speak them audibly from your seat, that will help. If not, we will get the microphone back and we'll work it out. And let them turn this on, by the way. Close enough. Okay. Before we start our regular agenda, I would like to make one minor change and ask for motion that we move the second public comments session up into the agenda so that it immediately precedes Resolution Number 65, which is the redeveloper agreement. That is, to allow those, all those comments. I think that's why most of you are here. We have motion to move that up to precede Resolution 65, please. Okay? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Swigway?
Yes.
Mr. Stinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Stinkle?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, first item, since not all of you attend all these meetings, we almost always have a public comment session at the beginning, which would be now. We limit that one to about thirty minutes, roughly ten people at three minutes apiece. Three minutes per speaker is how we do it. And then, same thing when we get to the second session. Because we have a large crowd, I'm going to ask everyone to at least assume for now that everyone will have one opportunity to speak, not multiple opportunities. And as we go through the second session, we'll do a time check and see how we're doing. But if you have a couple of items, try to, because this is, this is practical, just wanted you to know in advance. Alright, so we will start with the first public comments session. Who'd like to speak? Okay, right there, please. Yeah, everyone, when you speak, please state your name and address.
Do you speak English?
Yes, yes.
My name is Marilyn Walmsley, and I'm in Delaware Township, which is part of my town. Mr. Mayor, you've put your trust in Mr. Cusk, and you've designated him, designated him as your favorite developer. Therefore, I assume he has conducted, as they call it these days, extreme vetting in his credentials and his background to ensure the success of this project. I assume that success is especially important to you, since on your Facebook page, when you ran for mayor, you pointed out that you and your family lived here for twenty-seven years. So you have a reputation in the town, obviously. When you were elected to the Borough Council in 2010, you oversaw historic preservation and you were, and I quote, "on the key hotels redevelopment committee and worked closely with the hotel developers to help get this treasured landmark open for business again." That didn't turn out well, did it? It's clearly changed your mind as to how treasured the hotel is. You have an obligation to your constituents to ensure that you're putting the picture of Flemington's historic treasures into the hands of a successful and trustworthy developer. If I were doing this project, and I have always loved project management, that matters so, that's why I'm thinking of this. If I were doing this project, I'd be investigating and confirming that such a developer delivers on his promises. And there I can help with the Fredericksburg project, Fredericksburg, Virginia, in 2014. That he pays his creditors, including subcontractors, landowners, employees, and all other creditors. Mr. Mayor and Borough Council, you're responsible in the quality of life of the forty-five hundred residents of this borough. I hope you've investigated other unplanned expenses that may come up. What about the sewer system? That was built in eighteen eighty-six and still uses the original terracotta pipes. Not only does this gravity-fed system serve Flemington's borough, but it also runs the effluent through three bridges. Do you know the formula that determines if the system will handle the additional volume of a hundred hotel rooms and two hundred fifty condo units? What about the catch basin, which is the wet weather facility pumps? Are they adequate? If the system can't handle...
Okay, thank you. Let me ask you something. Thank you. We have to stick with the three minutes, and I would ask, if you intend on having us answer, please allow time in three minutes for us to do that. I would look about best to try and do the three minutes. Okay, Bruce, you want to...
Yeah, Bruce Norr. Last thirteen years, I was Detective Director of RTN UA, Director of Hattler. I'm a wet weather facility owner, re-woke. But the problem we had when I left, and I haven't, it's been a year to have, is the state is not going to relicize that. Problem is, the reason that thing sits there is that we have overflow in Flemington. It goes to the Bushville Creek, it gets treated, which is not very well, but it's treated and it's about the Bushville Creek. Now, it's going through a state, you're not allowed to have it, and all of a sudden an alternate. When I left, the alternate was thirty-three million dollars.
How much?
Thirty-three million dollars. And eighty percent of that will be paid by the borough, twenty percent by RTN UA. I'm just hoping that the developers or someone's engineers is sitting down with the, I presume he's still happy, that's it. Guys, what we got here, this is going to work. Because the problem is, the terracotta pipe, it takes a lead, two hundred and three thousand gallons a day, and eight times a year overflow, and would be processed. If it goes away, I don't know what you told me. Someone better talk to someone. Maybe Warren.
Yeah, we've been doing that. We've been at the state several times about this wet weather facility. It is something that is being worked out with him over time. I would caution against numbers like thirty-three million dollars. There, don't, don't take that into your minds as something that we're going to be stuck with. There was one worst-case scenario where it could be a lot of money, but we don't think that's going to happen, and we give you a heads up. These are, these are things that as part of this conversation, unfortunately, are being thrown out there because they have emotional appeal, either fear factor or what have you. Please, please don't, please don't go down these paths. But we are working, we are working with the state on the wet weather facility. Thank you, Bruce. Who else would like to speak? Okay, Richard Giffen.
Richard Giffen, nine Highland Avenue, just pulled off on that point. I mean, I'm a truck man here, I've spoken before about how this union can easily say, and the point about the water and sewer is a big problem, I think the philosophy over it. As it stands right now, the agreement says the developers are going to charge two million, then gives it back. So basically, he doesn't pay anything. So we, let me finish. So we pay whatever it costs. That is outrageous situation. I, I was in construction, I showed the agreement, my legal team at work, they've never seen an agreement so biased, or as I would have said, this is an outrageous agreement, it should be thrown out.
Richard, congratulations. And your interpretation of the sewer and water is wrong, it's just not accurate, and I wish you would keep, stop telling people that those are facts, because they are not. They are just inaccurate. They are inaccurate and full of assumptions and things that are just not the case.
And dollar for dollar credit, isn't that not correct? Dollar for dollar credit?
It says the developer pays, it does not say the developer pays and then charges it back to the town. That's not how it works. Developer pays means developer pays. Who has the next question, please? Gentlemen over here?
Hi, Fernando Pizzi, uh, uh, company building. The last meeting, when we were asking about the traffic study, so the work on, having this final, you just said sewer thing is being, why are you going on things without having those things like finalized? So you have the numbers, so we say thirty-three million, we say no, it's fixed money or whatever. Does that say, don't worry, we'll take care of it?
The redeveloper agreement that we vote on tonight begins a process by which you follow a number of formal steps that are defined under the redevelopment law for how you move the project forward. Those steps don't come till later. We have discussed them. We have a letter from the RTN UA that they have capacity to handle this project. There you go. And the developer is going to pay to transport it there, so it's covered.
Traffic consultant does.
The developer has a traffic consultant and has done some amount of work on it. No, it's not done, because that's not, it's not supposed to be done at this point. That is part of the process of going to the planning board, that is how any planning board application works. You work it out there, not here. Okay, who else? Who's in the back there? I can't see him, sorry. Sir? Yes.
Hi, thanks. Jim Bailey, I'm an attorney representing a number of citizens in Flemington. We have provided correspondence to the council earlier today, and I really just wanted to raise, because of the location, I really only wanted to raise one issue, and it's one specific issue on what I think is a theme in the agreement, which is the town has given up a number of its legislative prerogatives to the developer. One of those has to do with one that is explicitly not permitted by statute, which is to say that the development, the governing body will do the technical review of the concept plan and not the planning board. That is the kind of thing that I think every developer would like. They don't want to have to have you give the okay and then go to the planning board to get their okay, but the reality is, the statute pretty clearly lays out that the planning board has to do that review. So, so by your doing, and they're more particularly situated for that, because they handle all the applications in town. So I just raised it to you that it is, and there's a number of other themes in this agreement where the developer instructs you to do this, instructs you to do that, and you will act in your legislative capacity to do it. You must, because you're signing an agreement that says you will. And I just caution you that in a relationship with a developer, where it should be more of a partnership, and you should not be dictated in these things, some of which are contrary to the law, and some of which are just not really good policy.
Thank you. Congratulations. The redeveloping authority, Rob Beckelman, is here. Do you want to respond to that?
The agreement does not divest the planning board of any jurisdiction. It's a means of the borough acting as the redevelopment entity of first approval, of reviewing the project before it goes to the planning board to assure that it meets all the requirements of the borough. If the planning board by ordinance were to have a technical review, which the developer can still request, then they could just not do that. This does not divest the planning board of that right. It's an additional level of review to offer more protection to the borough, to assure that the project complies with all of the requirements that are being imposed. The steps that the borough is agreeing to take, legislative speaking, it's not ceding the legislative authority, these were part of the negotiation, these are things that the borough has determined are necessary to facilitate or move this project forward. There are processes that have to be followed, and any of the next steps that the borough has agreed to take, they'll be required to follow, all of those legal processes, many of which will require action by ordinance. So, we're back here again on each of those steps. The public will be at these meetings to comment on each of those steps as we move forward.
Thank you, Rob. Okay, who else would like to have a comment now? Man?
Ellen Adams, Corning, at a forty-three Spring Street. I just wanted to go back to the sewer project. In the contract, it says, "The redeveloper shall receive a dollar for dollar credit for all public improvements to the water distribution system and sewer system undertaken, installed, instructed against all lives or companies." What is that credit towards? If you're saying he's not going to be getting that back, what is that credit towards? Is that like, if you spend, I will explain that.
Okay, I'll explain that. If you look at our borough ordinances, when you connect up to our sewer or water system, you pay a rather hefty fee to make the connection, and that fee is, is, it's set not by the state, but the state, there's some interaction here, where the state tells you how much you're supposed to charge, and the intent is that the town, for instance, is not building a new water line just because you connect your house, so you might have to pay four thousand dollars to connect, which is deemed to be your fair share of the water system that you're paying for. So in this case, the developer is running the utility lines into the project, so he is already paying for, to supply the water. That is why we offer a credit up to what he's paying, because it would be double charging, to have him pay the utility lines in and then also have him pay connection fees, as if he was just hooking up like a private house. That'd be double billing. So, that's all that that is. He is still paying for the utility lines in and the sewer lines out.
Where is it at?
It says it in the developer agreement, that he's paying for the sewer water lines in. That is one of the many, many pieces of misinformation that's being circulated around the town, unfortunately.
I'm a bit confused myself, and I was questioning after-living, basically, and it's just, I don't, I don't see what goes under charge, and I just see how it's a double, double payment.
It's, it's pretty clear, the developer is paying for the sewer lines in and the water lines out. It's very clearly stated. Rob, you want to add anything to that, or is that covered?
Well, I did sewer line that.
This is after the developer has the obligation to pay for, it's the support point four A, the cost for utility upgrades and installation is required as a result of the construction of the project. That at the outset is the developer's responsibility. It's what's the additional, the additional after that. So it's their initial obligation to pay for what's caused by the project. Thank you.
Who else has a question, please? How about gentleman in the back there on the aisle?
I'll give it to my wife.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, for the concerned taxpayers of our township.
All right, hold on a minute, I'll bring the mic back.
As a taxpayer of our township, I am requesting clarification.
Name and address, please.
Catherine Wetstein, twenty-five Atgar Court, Flemington. I am requesting clarification of some published comments that have made me nervous. These published comments say, in reference to the pilot, the payment in lieu of taxes associated with this project, that council is prepared to sign an agreement guaranteeing that the developer will receive this tax break and not be required to pay taxes for a long number of years, but at the same time, the agreement will give him the right to avoid the taxes, but the agreement will not quote the actual figures. That you will sign the agreement before the figures are available, that will make clear how the pilot will affect school taxes and how much our taxes will increase because of this thing, and I just want clarification. I'm assuming that is incorrect, and I'm assuming that council would not sign any agreement unless the public was made aware of how that agreement is going to negatively impact our taxes. Thank you.
That is one of the other inaccurate summaries that's going around, that your taxes are going to go up, that they're not going to go up. Since Rob, since Rob is here, I think it's better to let him speak to pilot, okay? Go ahead, Rob.
There have been some initial, there's been an initial review of the estimated taxes of the pilot, the effect of the pilots. It's not finalized. It is, in this agreement, it's contemplated that that is part of what will be approved ultimately. That's one of the things I mentioned before, that has a separate approval process. So those details, those numbers, the impacts of the pilot, the benefits of the pilot, the needs of the pilot will all be addressed in a public forum. The pilot has to be approved separately by ordinance. At that time, all of that information has to be evaluated and reviewed. It's my understanding, there's been this preliminary assessment of what the estimates look like, and they're reasonable enough that the borough's attorney will move forward with this stage of the agreement to grant the designated developer status, so that everybody can move forward with the commitment to the developer, and the borough's, and the developer's commitment to the borough. But again, these are all things that will have to be fleshed out, the details provided, and that will happen, again, in a public forum with a hearing on ordinance.
And is it fair, isn't it fair to say too, that since that, a pilot has to be adopted later by ordinance, you can't specify all the terms now and pre-commit something that hasn't even been voted on until later? Okay. Who else, who else? Colleen Mosetti?
Colleen Mosetti, thirty-sixth and eighty-second Avenue. And I just wanted to follow up on your comments. I have a report from the state comptroller, Matthew Boxer, in direct reference to the pilot program. It's called Best Practices. It's on NewJersey.com, and I can abbreviate, because you did such a wonderful job giving an introduction to this. But it says, "The agency granting the abatement should ensure full public disclosure of abatement details before the term of the agreement." Needful.
We will.
Oh, okay, right. But now we're going to lead the party for the horse, and we go forward. Let me finish, I have three minutes. Then, I'm going to read the last paragraph here. "Many of these well-founded suggestions are not sufficiently part of the current New Jersey abatement practices. As noted previously, this is the result of, among other things, nebulous state policies, local constraints, confusion concerning state law, and this part underlines and involves incentives that push local officials to provide only minimal scrutiny. We need to know that Mr. Cusk is going to be able to provide financial support for this project, and I think that we deserve to know the financial part of this before you move forward."
Okay. I believe that, I believe that. That is adopted by the council in an ordinance, which means there's a first reading, and then a public hearing, and then a vote, so it's all, it's all done in public with a hearing before vote. Rob?
The comptroller's report was from 2010, and it's never been acted on or adopted by the administration.
A very smart man, educated to Princeton and Columbia.
Please. You know, as a matter of theory, you can argue whether pilots are good or not. Fact is, they're in existence, and if some towns offer it, and some don't, it's a factor in where developers want to go. And I would ask you, if the developer was doing a project exactly like you wanted, and said, "I'll fix the hotel, but I can't do it without a pilot," would you be opposed to a pilot?
Probably yes.
Who's got the next question? Gentlemen, right here, please.
Mob Ball, forty-seven Cafetary.
Say that again?
Microphone, the microphone should go to the people in the audience again.
I can handle it.
All right, Mob Ball, forty-seven Cafetary.
All right, this hotel is splitting the town apart. This guy's stopped it a while. I'm forty-six, and I have little desire to live in this town anymore. There's no, I have no profit, same friends. Don't move here, and why should they? I mean, council and personal passion that's going on, this guy's stopped, it's, it's a total bore, it's a total dog. Where are the young people here? Everybody here, I bet you about ten percent of the people here are under forty years old. Where are the young people? You guys gotta step up.
Right here.
All right, well, get your friends.
Yeah!
Get your friends to live in this town.
Hey, I'll move.
Bingo. If nobody here likes the plant, well, guess what I do? All right? I want this, I want this place to flourish, I want to stay here. I mean, I venture I want to stay here, I don't want to really move. Something, I want something to do at night, I want people to come to this town, I want to, I want something to do back, not ten years from now.
Thank you. Can we do that?
Joey, we have to work on this next year. I would say I vehemently disagree with you that this issue is tearing the town apart. We are like a family that argues, that when it comes together at the end, I think the eventual process here is that we are going to come together with a very great solution, and it will be best for the town. All the process going back and forth, I think that has been a very healthy conversation. And yes, it will heated, just like arguing with your own family, arguing with your wife, arguing with your husband, arguing with your kids, and I think the eventual thing that we will all have together, and it will be the best decision for our town.
Thank you, Joey. Okay, we'll take a break from comments, move through some of the items of the agenda, and we'll be back. So our next item is the approval of minutes. We have a motion, please, to adopt the minutes of the February twenty-seventh, 2017 regular meeting. Okay, that's Mark and John. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Swigway?
Yes.
Mr. Stinkle?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Everyone, if you would, please, quiet so we can, let's do this, thank you. All right, motion, please, to adopt the early executive session minutes from February twenty-seventh. John and Mark, roll call, please.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Swigway?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, lastly, for the minutes, a motion to adopt the late executive session minutes from February twenty-seventh.
Second.
Morgan Kim, roll call, please.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Swigway?
Yes.
Mr. Stinkle?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have seven items in our consent agenda, so I'd like a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please. Okay? It's Mark and John, roll call, please.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Swigway?
Yes.
Mr. Stinkle?
Yes.
Yes, because I need to state on four and six, because I have a previous relationship with the borough of our own people.
She's standing on six. Okay, thank you. All right, now that brings us back to where we moved the second public comments session. So, before we... So before we start that session, just another, another word here. We normally, these sessions run about 30 minutes, and it says on the agenda that it's 30 minutes. I know we have a big crowd tonight, so what we'll do, we don't know how many people want to speak, we'll take speakers who have not spoken yet. And it is 8 o'clock now, so when we get to around 8:30, we'll kind of see where we are, and we, we will either extend or not at that point, but just so you have an idea how we'll proceed. And again, if you are asking us a question, please allow time in your few minutes for us to provide an answer if you can. Thank you. Okay, back to, back to public comments, then. Who's next?
Mayor, can I just ask that the microphone, please, pass to the people, the audience, a little lock button, we hear you very clearly, and not we hear the audience very clearly.
Willing to?
I think we should.
Okay, can I hear your front, please? Ma'am, you have your hand up?
I have it on.
Yes.
We'll get you, but take care of it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Patricia Valley, and I live in 39 Meadow Lane in Rare Dungeon. There's also a question about the underground spring near Spring Street. When excavation starts for a 900-car garage underground, how will that be, how will that water be handled? What precautions will be taken to protect neighbors from flooding? And what's the position of the Department of Environmental Protection regarding this excavation of this spring? One other question I've got also, is you mentioned that Mr. Cusk is only viable for the water and sewer that's going to go into his building itself and be part of the buildings from the underneath. Who's going to pay for all the streets to be replaced and the, and the power of water sewer to go underneath the streets? And, you know, and to be all the, I'm sorry.
Let me give that back to the mayor, okay? As for water under there, the developer has done testing so far, underground testing. I am not a technical expert on that. I don't know exactly what they have done, but they are, I know that they have done enough testing. They are satisfied from their professionals that the excavation can proceed and that it will work. That is what I know about it. So if water or no water, I don't honestly know what you would do with the underground water. However, I can tell you that we are, we are working with the DDP on all phases of this project as, as needed on several fronts. So they will certainly be involved as they need to be with excavation. As for the cost, the developer is paying the, when you, when you dig up to put in water lines, it's part of the job that you fix it up when you got an in, so.
Peterson was only, he was only responsible for what's going into the buildings, not taking the street?
Well, no, no, he would, he will provide the full utility infrastructure to support the project, which means if you have to, let's say hypothetically, if you have to start three blocks away to get it into the project, then he will run it for three blocks to get it in.
And he will pay for that?
Yes. Yes, that's what the agreement says. The agreement, the agreement is very clear about that, I think. I'm surprised there seems to be so much explaining underway about it, because, thank you for bringing it up. In the back, I'm sorry, I can't see who that is. Yes, your hand up.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Bill Playhile. I live in.
I know, I often want to, just to make sure, I want to make sure everybody can hear.
Sure, absolutely.
Even though you do projection.
I do a little bit of projection. Mr. Mayor, my name is Bill Playhile. I am a business owner from Lambertville and a member of the Hunter County Chamber of Commerce. One of the first questions I had was asking for supposing that Mr. Cusk was your favorite developer. Three questions. Number one, who are the developers that have made application to do the redevelopment at this point? Number one. Number two, how many tax rateables are you getting from properties that are proposed to be knocked down? And number three, how many private sector jobs presently exist out of that property that is to be redeveloped?
Thank you, Mr. Playhile, for those questions. Well, I think we know the answer to the first one is, Mr. Cusk is the first developer to approach us with a real solution to the problem. As for the number three question, the jobs, there are, of course, the only jobs right now are coupled in that yellowfinch antiques. I don't know how many people work in there, but it wanted to. And your question about the tax revenues, they are, they're very small. If you look at all the properties in the redevelopment area, the current borough share is approximately $65,000, and it would be way more than that under a pilot payment, way more than that. And so, thank you. Who else has some questions? I'm sorry, I just can't see here. Sir?
Thank you. My name is Michael Harris. I live here in Funtz and Row. I had a question, rateables came up, and also a question regarding other developers. Of course, this developer did not have to submit a competitive bid. And this current project, which has been expanded also, has never gone out with competitive bid. Susan Peterson suggested in December that we take one year and review plans. And I think that a year from now, unless this is railroaded in that time, I think it'll be difficult. Unless that happens, I think a year from now, we'll all say, we wish we took that year, because it's very difficult right now for residents and those members in municipalities to really trust that the developer who is not going through that vetting of a competitive bid process has really submitted the best bid. We've heard about negotiations, yet there's been no evidence. We're told that we have to agree to a plan now because it's process, and we'll find out what it will cost later. So we're hiding behind the process in terms of we will have this pilot to follow. Yet when does this borough council ever oppose, any member ever oppose any step from this developer? It's very hard as residents not to see that this council is not here to advocate for this single developer. And it would have been so simple to have gone through a competitive bid process to remove that. It would have been so simple to review aspects of a project plan to come and not to speculate And when people are referring to documents with control, the control doesn't have horse in this race. But it's hard not to imagine, at this point, without competitive bid, that those who are negotiating the plan on our behalf don't have horse in this race. I'm asking for this borough council to represent this community. And I know we're going to say, this is the best plan. I am telling you, and I've written this, the Union Hotel itself, that's a diversion. If any of the previous Union Hotel plans were considered at all viable, how is it now that despite the 2015 approved master plan, which we only have to go a few blocks up to see, we're looking at 30 units per acre? What would that do here? About 120 units? But we're entertaining 250 units. We're entertaining 900-car parking garage. We're entertaining retail, hotel, hotels with 100 rooms. If the previous plans were at all viable, no pilot payment, but if they were all viable, if the members on this borough council were present at that time, then how is it we don't imagine now that we can consider this with any confidence?
He's been reading the, I think, the developer meeting twice, and you can see where it's left us. If we, if for some circumstance we were to find ourselves doing that again, I can assure you, you would be back here asking the same questions. You'd have another developer in here who you probably wouldn't know as well as we know the, the developer who's local. You would be asking the same questions. They would have the, the plan part of an LLC, where it's kind of self-contained. You would be asking the same questions. How do we know they're not just going to tear it down and walk away? Those concerns don't go away just because you have a different developer. They apply to any developer, and we've seen where that process got us twice in the past. Who else has a question? Back there, please. Yes, ma'am. Susan. I feel like I can't, it's hard to see.
Thank you. My name is Susan Engler, 36th Road Street, Flemington Borough, and I'm a consulting architect.
Susan, if you could hold that up.
I'm sorry. And I'm a consulting architect by trade. For the record, I serve as the vice chair in for Flemington Borough Planning and zoning order adjustments, as well as an appointed member of both the current and previous Union Hotel Council subcommittees. My comments tonight are dependent and do not necessarily represent the opinions of these two groups. As a professional in the construction industry, I can't see some quality design or planning ideas within the proposed project that Mr. Cusk, that Mr. Cusk proposes. And it appears that he doesn't have the means and understanding to follow this project to its completion. However, tying this, this concept plan as an exhibit to the development agreement that you're reviewing tonight, which assumes the premise of demolishing four architecturally significant buildings on Main Street, will jeopardize the long-term viability of this project. Not only does full demolition open the borough up to lawsuits and resulting construction delays because of the clear conflict with the borough's master plan, but when a concept plan is legally tied to the development agreement, this, this as an exhibit, it establishes an assumed financial protocol established by the pilots. This affects the physical viability, the fiscal, excuse me, viability of both the municipality and the developer's interests and ability to guarantee himself a fair rate of return on his investment. In other words, the developer and municipality needs to have some confidence that the concept plan that is, as the exhibit is in the agreement that's proposed, although maybe altered slightly when the municipality issues the development plan, won't change significantly after the development agreement is executed. Otherwise, it renders the pilot meaningless. Tying this concept plan, which has not been fully vetted by the full development committee, forces a lack of flexibility in the financial obligations of both the parties once this agreement is executed. In addition, by arguing, arguing that the planning board has the opportunity for input in the development plan is null, because this project as part of the established area need to be developed, the planning board has a very limited role in this process. Our recommendations aren't binding, and we are not even obligated to hear public comments. And the council can approve that development plan by a supermajority. At this point, I'm forced unfortunately to point out some of the faults that I feel have been in the development process up to this date, and must question the lack of consistency and transparency in the, in the development and research of design questions. I understand.
Thank you. All right, you have the microphone. Thank you. Who else? You ready? Oh, I'll tell you what, Barry, sit, sit right back here. All right, go, go. All right. We'll be late. I won't.
Elaine Lorben, 34th New York Avenue. And much as Susan made her disclaimers, I've been a longtime, over 50-year resident of Flemington, and I also chair the Historic Preservation Commission for the Borough of Flemington, and serve in other capacities as a volunteer. I have two questions. As I read the entire agreement, word for word, understanding most of it, I believe, my first question is, with all of the borough ordinances that are presently in effect and in place, will those remain in place during the time of this agreement? That is my first question. And be it here too. We have hundreds of ordinances, and my question would be, are we discounting any of them, or are they all in place? That's my first question. Second question, in the agreement on page 28, 6.2, letter H, refers to a redevelopment plan. I sit on the expanded redevelopment committee, which unfortunately is not met in the last five months. And so my question would be, when you refer to a redevelopment plan that we have not yet written, which redevelopment plan is this referring to on page 28? Those are my two questions.
The one that will be written.
This is the one that will be written?
Sure. Sorry, you're here. Sorry. Rob, you want to cover these here? These steps are covered by municipal law, I mean, by redevelopment law, and you take them in certain order. That's why you leave it later, because that's the prescribed order.
It is referring to the current plan that's, that's the place, that's, that was duly adopted.
The current plan?
Yes.
Is adopted for one of the developers, the local?
Yeah, the plan that is just now in ordinance. That's what it's referring to there. It's saying that that plan is duly adopted.
Not the plan that is going to be amended.
No, no, it's not. Because it hasn't been yet.
It'll be amended.
So the, the next part of the question is, that redevelopment plan currently controls the zoning, and it says which ordinance applies and which ordinance it supersedes. The amended plan will do the same thing. So.
And that's my first question about whether it's in place and if it is, as a first redevelopment, it's not going to be.
That will be addressed when the plan amendments, would you then go back for a public hearing at the House of Lords, as well as coming by the plan?
It wasn't.
Right now, right now, you have a plan that says which ordinance is applied, which not. That's, that's the statute right now. What will happen to the amended plan will be started with the amended plan.
Can you do anything else? Over here, Marcia. Marcia Carrow?
Marcia Carrow, Flemington native. I can turn, I'm a rare townie in Lambertville, who care about my rating base. I just have a, I guess I don't know if it's a statement, but mayor, you just said that if this had actually gone out on to bid, if you'd actually taken Susan Peterson seriously and spent a year and put this out, we would be in the same place, and we'd all be back here, and that there would be nothing to prevent it. That is so not true.
I said you got the same question.
Same question. Well, here's how you avoid it. You know, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different outcome. How you avoid it is to ask for financials, which weren't done with either set of the pre-approved redevelopers. You haven't asked for full financials from this redeveloper. And also, what you didn't ask for from the last two, and you didn't ask for it in this agreement either, is a performance bond to make sure this project gets completed. I have been elected in local and state government for about 20 years. I have never seen anything as badly written and poorly constructed that gives away sovereign rights of municipal government ever in my life, like this agreement. Everything from subordinating to mortgage holders and giving up your right to be the first lien holders on a project, to giving recourse bonds without a performance bond in place. The reason that you only have been dealing, and you admitted this, mayor, in public, in the newspaper, that you gave Jack Cusk of all, you know, the big wide-open door was because he had the liquor license. You don't even ask in this agreement for first rates of refusal if he walks to get that liquor license back. The very least, the borough should be able to buy that liquor license from him to keep it with the property. And this agreement gives eight years, eight years, without him having to start a single thing, not counting force majeure, not counting any other interruptions, eight years for him to put. I have never seen anything as badly written and poorly constructed that gives away sovereign rights of municipal government ever in my life like this agreement. Everything from subordinating to mortgage holders and giving up your right to be the first lien holders on a project, to giving recourse bonds without a performance bond in place. The reason that you only have been dealing, and you admitted this, Mayor, in public in the newspaper, that you gave Jack Cusk all, you know, the big wide-open door was because he had the liquor license. You don't even ask in this agreement for first rates of refusal if he walks to get that liquor license back. The very least, the borough should be able to buy that liquor license from him to keep it with the property. And this agreement gives eight years, eight years, without him having to start at a single thing, not counting force majeure, not counting any other interruptions, eight years for him to put anything in place before he even starts. And you wouldn't give Susan or this very divided community one year to find another redeveloper who would keep those buildings in place? Shame on all of you. All of you should get shamed.
The eight years is not a time to start, it's an outside time to finish. And as for the liquor license statement, the liquor license is one of the advantages, but I don't think anyone ever said that you give the whole project just because of the license.
You did. You did.
It's in the end, it makes sense, though. Who else? Somebody in the balcony?
I have a meeting in my.
Okay.
James Harden, White House, New Jersey. Been living in North Carolina for 25 years. Heard a lot of talk about taxes and different plans. But I ask everyone here tonight to just look around this room. Look around this room, look at this courthouse, look at the building or look at the street this building is on. You can feel the history. You can feel the charm. That type of charm and history, once lost, can never be brought back. It's like a magnet for some people. Pulls people to towns. Look at Lambertville, cities that deserve their history. This plan seems to erase that history. I looked at the plan, I looked at the aspects of Main Street, realized once they're lost, not only will they not be regained, but I ask you tonight, on committee, if you can honestly look at this and tell us that this plan is the best plan for preserving that kind of charm and that kind of history and that kind of magnet. You can feel the history here. What will we feel when that's gone? What will we feel when it's replaced with an eight-story building? How is this going to change and improve us? Can you honestly say that if you've looked at all of the plans and that there's no other option than the one that embraces this history, who made this town not only part of Flemington's great tracks, but New Jersey's? This is something that if you're destroying that side of the street, it'll destroy the very character of this town. I ask you to consider and think hard before you answer my question, because your vote tonight could be our children's legacy. So can you justify and honestly say there are no other plans out there who preserve this history and charm?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Jim Robinson, and I'm the vice chairman of 100 and County Chamber of Commerce. I've been on the chamber board for almost 20 years. I was then. I live in Saroval. I'm the vice chairman of the 100 and County Planning Board, and my office is in Flemington. I was the planning board chairman for 16 years and president of New Jersey Planning Officials for two terms. I was the vice chairman of the 100 and Economic Partnership when sat on the county census committee. I was also involved in economic development in Sussex County. In those roles, I've developed an understanding of business, planning, land use, and economic development. But it doesn't take that experience for someone to recognize Flemington has a problem that needs to be addressed now. I've also been involved with pilot programs, and while I'm not going to comment on this specific one, I just want to give you a little bit of history about pilots. The original development or abatement statute was in the early 1960s, before the term light was in vogue, and then replaced by areas in need of redevelopment or areas in need of redevelopment. And the original economic development incentive was called Fox-Lance. It was proposed by the newer Chamber of Commerce to redevelop that area. And it was, the original sponsor was Senator Fox of Essex and Senator Wesley Lance, right here at 100 and County. And I thought it was unusual. I understood why a senator from Essex would be the sponsor, and I asked Jim Lance, Senator's son, why his father sponsored it. And he told me that Senator Lance understood the need for government to assist where it could to promote economic development and revitalize business districts that were not living up to their potential. That need was real then and is real now. I'm also not going to get into the COA aspect of that, but I think we all have to recognize that that's a very important obligation, and this plan addresses that, which is a good thing. We all know the hotel's recent history, starting with the closing of the top floors in the 50s, the plan starting in 2007, the closing in 2008, and the various development scenarios since then. Our love of the past ties us to this courtroom and to a lesser extent, to the buildings across the street. But our understanding of the economic realities of the present and the future tell us that time is now, or probably was even a little while ago, to move forward, to accept the reality that Flemington needs a catalyst and economic boost to prosper, to remain viable, and to reverse the downward economic spiral that we have all experienced in the last decade since the hotel closed. In fact, we should probably accept and examine the reason the hotel closed almost 10 years ago and commit ourselves to moving forward together. The Chamber of Commerce believes this plan is in the best interest of Flemington and 100 and County.
Hi, Denise Schmidt, 48th Broad Street, Flemington. This is a continuation of Susan Engelhardt's letter. Mr. Cusk deserves our benefit of the doubt as he's invested significant soft costs into our community to develop this concept plan. But that's all of this. A concept plan, Mr. Cusk has been primarily directed by three elected officials throughout the last 12 months. The eight-story proposed design may be too grandiose in its scale and concept. However, without having the opportunity to review the project's program with Mr. Cusk, the development committee can't even begin to identify where the project can be scaled back and construction costs saved in order to provide a design that the entire community can support. I want to see a programmatic breakdown per square feet of each type and used associated construction cost in order to understand and appreciate the rate of return challenges the proposed developer faces. Justification for the scale of the building should be provided, and perhaps some opportunities for cost savings will arise. Smaller-scale buildings and/or adaptive reuse of buildings and/or facades by adjusting the program can be identified. This information has not been presented to the full committee. In fact, the full redevelopment committee had a total of three-minute meetings in the year 2016, the last of which was on October 3rd. It took six months for the council to appoint additional members to the committee. Previous committees included a wider cross-section of the public, as well as borough employees and volunteers. Being told by a council member during my first development committee meeting last August that I am, in quotation marks, "only a member of the subcommittee," demonstrated a sense of superiority and attitude that shocked me. I know I have spoken to several of you on the council over the last few weeks, and I was surprised some council members were not aware that the expanded redevelopment committee had not met since October. I personally voted yes to declare the hotel parcel as an area in need of redevelopment nine years ago. I take personal responsibility for that action, and I regret that I, and I suspect many of my peers, did not fully understand the full consequences of declaring the Union Hotel parcel and its neighboring buildings as an area of need of development. Never did I imagine, nor perhaps neither did our borough development attorney, to anticipate a proposal that will allow New Jersey Development Law the possibility of four significant buildings that define human scale, streetscape, architectural detail, and rhythm of proportion along our historic Main Street. This consistency doesn't exist on the opposite side of Main Street. Thank you.
Barry.
Barry, we have people in the hallway.
Thank you, Barry. Yeah, there are some people in the back. There are plenty of seats if you want to come in. They're here in the regular section, as well as on the slides. There's plenty of seating. Okay. As I mentioned when we started this, we are at 8:30, which is our normal average length of these sessions here. So about, can you raise, how many people still want to speak but not spoken? All right, we've got about a half dozen, maybe more than that. I'll ask council, would you want to, I mean, we have a lot of other business to do. Would you want to extend this for a period of time? What we just said, 15 minutes or so? All right. All right, we, okay, we'll extend this then for 15 more minutes. Do we need to vote that or not?
I think you choose because you can say it's a common authority, and if you go on another one, that is a good idea.
All right. Okay, Brian news that. Kim seconds that. Do we have all eyes? Okay, we have all eyes. Okay, we'll extend this until about 8:45. Okay. Who else? Back there, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Yeah, you. Right there.
Yes, I'm continuing to read my remarks. Tracy Colson, Raritan Township. I would continue to stress to the redevelopment committee that one of the benefits of New Jersey Development Law is that we, the municipality, own the responsibility of the development plan. We are responsible to set the standards on what is built on this project. We will, I will encourage the development subcommittee to, at minimum, preserve some or all of the facades of these buildings. I recommend the council table this developers' agreement for now, but reinstate Mr. Cusk as our preferred developer in early April when his deadline expires and allow the redevelopment committee to do our job. We need to respect and recognize his personal investment and dedication to this borough. This will give us some time to identify the educational and/or medical use rates to review the historic preservation research that the developer has already invested in and not yet shared with the full committee. I also recommend provision be included in the agreement to require any historic building to be demolished, be fully documented, quote, "in accordance with the National Historic Preservation Association Guidelines," end quote. The planning board has required this for buildings far less architecturally significant. In fact, a 3D laser scan should, is highly recommended. I'm ready to go to work, roll up my sleeves, and work for you, Mr. Cusk. I look forward to working with the rest of the subcommittee, Mr. Cusk, and his professionals on the development plan in the coming weeks. And in my own opinion, I find it fascinating to watch these procedures over the last few months. It's reminiscent of what went on in Reddington when they condemned the Solberg property. And that didn't turn out too well for the community of Reddington, who now owes in excess of a $2 million law bill because they didn't do the right thing. This is not the right thing. We need to rethink this. This is an identifying part of this community. This is a historic landmark. Aside from the emotion, taking emotion out of it, this is an identifiable part of this community. We've got to get that away. And putting a 900 parking spot, for what? So that they can park cars from the baseball stadium and the lacrosse games that go on 12 months out of the year? Is that what's necessary here? A 100-room hotel so that people have a, quote-unquote, "closer place to stay"? There are plenty of places to stay. I've done the travel-sport routine. There's always a hotel to go to. It doesn't have to necessarily be here, nine stories high. Also, in terms of the college, has there been any plan for that? Is it going to be Raritan College? We have Raritan-Babie Community College, 20 minutes down the road. Who's going there? You need to think about this, and you need to think about the identity of this community.
So there are actually a couple of cases that are, I'm going to try to work really quickly through your points. You can mention a lot of them. To Susan's comments, we're still, that committee's still working on the plan. We took out hiatus to get this agreement together, but that plan is kind of the next big phase here. So there's still a lot of work yet to do on that, so that committee's not done its work. I wasn't the councilperson who would have said that, if somebody did say that to you, so I apologize if you ever must have said that, because it wasn't me. To answer your, interesting, parallel, you draw the Solberg, is actually Solberg did exactly the opposite. So the situation in Reddington is that, you know, in my opinion, is they didn't respect property rights, and they sought to prevent the use of the property, something that was probably okay for them to use. And so they, it's actually completely inconversive of this situation, where we are moving forward to allow for the redevelopment of a property that's privately owned. So, you know, this project is actually, in my opinion, respecting property rights, not quietly.
Both phones closed.
Okay, who else would like to speak? Back there on the aisle, please.
Oh, you already spoke, right?
Thank you, thank you. And if you can hear, recall, she has gone as a doctor today. It's going to be her day. My name is Tiffany Joz, live at 43 St. Street. And I have to say, I'm really kind of at a torn for this. You know, I have grown up on St. Street, basically my entire life. I'm planning on raising my kids there. And this plan seems like it has been, I'm very frustrated, and I know everybody else is frustrated, too. I see both sides. I want something to do with my kids. I want to be able to take my kids someplace, it's not just a restaurant, although I get yours all the time. Thank you for the ice cream. You know, I want something to do, so I see that aspect of it. That's great. But I also look around, and I love the architecture, and I love the small-town feel, and I love everything else about this town. And to think that we were going to tear down a block to put up a nine-story building, let's see here, we're not going to be able to see the top of the courthouse from back by Al Wood, we're not going to be able to see, excuse me, eight stories. Sorry if I see you guys sneering there.
You're in a couple places.
Yeah. But I think that's utterly ridiculous. You guys seem to be acting a little bit hastily. And you know what? This isn't a haircut that's going to grow out in a couple years. This isn't, you know, something that we can go, oh, well, you know what? Shoot, we should have done something else. If you vote tonight for something like this, this is changing generations. And I don't know about you guys, but especially with the snow coming tomorrow, I've seen how tight these streets are, and it's not going to be fitting all of these cars down here. Takes me some mornings, five minutes to turn on spring onto Main Street for Maple. We're adding all these to, we're going to put up more streetlights and everything up. Come on. Come on. You're acting very hastily, and it isn't very becoming, okay? I just want to put that out there. I'm trying to raise my family here, and I don't like the thought, and especially with this historical, about, well, if we see a building that looks like, you know, we don't really like it, we're going to basically take it away and make it a main. I don't know about the rest of you, but I don't think that's right at all. And shame on you for thinking that.
One year, I bet from this point, I don't fail to see how that is paced. Julia Braun.
Julia Braun, 77 Jefferson Court, Flemington. I'd say we move two buildings on Main Street and the borough. And if I want to move into other departments, I certainly can, and I'm a good borough resident, too. But anyway, I'm going to just make a comment or a question, you can take it on a car if you want. It's why not keep the historic buildings, 76 Main, the hotel, and 78 Main, the antique store buildings, and 90 Main, the police station? Even if the Cusk plan is accepted, these buildings should stay. They are essential in every planning document and analysis in the recent Flemington master plan. But those buildings are essential to this town. They provide authenticity, feel, and character of a place that's grown over time with appropriate scale and architecture. They should be incorporated into the Cusk plan, they could be incorporated into the Cusk plan with almost no honey or physical impact to the project. His latest version of the plan shows four stories along the storefront, along the street front. These buildings would provide I don't know of, has got the entire center of the town and stuck in seven, eight-story buildings and had that town revitalized. They have all, Lamberville, Doylestown, which is, you know, no river, Frenchtown, Flintons, Summerville. Summerville did not got the heart of their Main Street. Yes, they didn't. They didn't make a mistake in the seventies. They tore down part of their district, which, guess what? That was a big failure. Okay? So that was a failure. We don't want to go back to that, only make this town become what it's always been, charming, and a place to go. And so.
Okay. Don, Don Schubert?
Okay, Don, you're going to David Road and hopefully one-third to Main Street. I've heard lots of criticism and criticism tonight, but one thing I haven't heard is, what will it take to make, borrow a phrase, Flemington great again? Flemington traditionally has relied on the retail and office sector to cover fifty percent of the tax load. But they're the two sectors that are sick right now, and have been for several years. What we lack is sufficient confidence in the future of Flemington, and mandates won't help, whole project won't help, I'm glad so. It takes a bold project to do it. It takes one of the size of what we're talking about here. I'm not here as a supporter or proponent of Jack Cust, but he is the only one who has come up with something that I, and I say it from, I like to think it's a perpetual, perpetual, with the kind of a project that will make the difference, that will make Flemington work. And so, I undoubtedly support the project.
Jeff Kane, King Flatland, Flemington. So the one benefit of this having taken so long is I've had, I guess, seven years to agonize over what I actually think about projects. And I'm still probably fifty-five, forty-five. And ultimately, I think, I probably would not move forward with this one. And it's not, I understand that you all live in the Borough. You are going to be dealing with the same problems that we are, if the project is ultimately realized, or you're updating, here's the construction. So I get that you're, you're in this just as much as I am. And my biggest concerns are, to some extent, fiscal. I worry about liabilities of the PABS. I worry about what can happen that I'm not experienced enough to foresee. But really, to me, it's about looking at the character of the town, history notwithstanding. One of the things that I like about the town is it's relatively safe, no pedestrians, it's a relatively low amount of traffic. It's safe, my daughter making her states on her bike when she rides down Main Street. And if we're putting a seven-story, eight-story, let's say greater than five-story building on Main Street with a large amount of parking, we're looking at increasing influx of traffic in town. That's going to change the character of the town. We're going to go from a very small town to something that's not. And once we move forward with that, there's no one ringing that bell. So like I said, this is something I personally agonized over for, I probably ate the last meal at the Union Hotel. Maybe it wasn't the greatest thing. This is something that I've agonized over for seven years. And I just feel that this is probably the wrong decision, and it would be better to make no decision and bear the risk that way than to make what appears to me to be bad.
We're at eight forty-five. Drive five, we'll take one more here. Robert, you want to go?
Save the best for last, right? Mayor. So I just want to say that, it's Robert Shaw, forty-seven Bar Street. I just want to say, Mayor, that, you know, listening to what's going on here tonight and all of the opposition to this, this development, gives me a lot of concern. I hope it gives you some pause. Because what I've heard from you, more than anyone since evening, is you're more of an advocate for the developer, which I have no qualms in, a developer, but you seem to be more of an advocate for the developer than your constituents. And...
Yeah, it is. But this is hard, and I'm trying, I'm trying to be really objective here, because, you know, I'm not up here to look at, you know, how I can get, calm and very, no, respectful. So my, my bigger concern is that, you know, if you may vote on this tonight, and I think if you vote a long way, it can actually impugn your integrity. But more importantly, it will alleviate the responsibility to represent us, your constituents. I live in Flemington. I love this town. I've worked very, very hard to make it a better community. And what I fear is that Mr. Cust will walk. And I think, right from the, right from the beginning, I told you almost a year ago, it was in March, up there first time, that he came and presented, that we ought to ask him to, or you ought to tell him what you must have in this, this project, so that it meets the needs of this community. And I'm concerned that never happens, because I don't believe that the needs of the community are being met. And I believe that listening to everyone here tonight is demonstrative of the fact that the needs aren't being met. I would ask you all, I'm looking at you, Mr. Gorman, you Brookley Woods, you Marty, Tim Tilly, to look at this and think, taking a pause, what could that do for us? Will it give an opportunity to come up with a consensus that satisfies more than less? That's all I ask. Good evening. Do you support the project?
I do.
You do? Okay. Thank you. All right. Okay. We come now to the, thank you all for coming out tonight in the face of some snow, I don't know how it started yet. We come now to the resolution number sixty-five, which is to authorize the redevelopment agreement for Union Hotel area, Mr. John Dick Cust Jr. So I'd like to ask for a motion and a second, and then we will allow for some council discussion about it before we vote. So can we have a motion, please? Can we have a motion, please, on the resolution? We are going to, guys, so we'll have a motion and a second, and then we'll have comments. Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Do you want me to go first or what?
Oh, yes.
All right, I'll leave off. You don't mind, I'll stand if I like to be able to see, to see. No, we're going to have council discussion, and then we will vote. Play each council person wants to, just two words. And I just like to be able to see as best as I can. Six years ago, exactly, six years ago, in March two thousand and eleven, we sat here in this very courtroom, and we had a, this Welsh Scottish developer, a Mark Mulligan, had a proposal to redevelop the hotel, but his plan called for some housing above the actual restaurant. And this was not exactly what the town wanted. They wanted to see redevelopment, but they did not want that. Council felt he was the better choice, and we said so. But it wasn't really what the town wanted. And at that time, the town was unanimous in their feeling, at least the people who showed up here. They were unanimous to the point that the developer withdrew his application. So we were only left with one to consider, and that's the way we went. And that was six years ago, and we've all seen how that worked out. The town back then was unanimous. Since then, public opinion has shifted considerably, and the town is clearly not unanimous at this point. It is divided on this project. But I don't think that the town is divided about the need that something must be done for Main Street. Since that decision in two thousand and eleven, business values have declined by seven percent. Even though the only, the total real estate in Flemington bottomed in two thousand and thirteen, businesses are still seven percent below where they were at the time of that decision. And business valuations take into account profitability, so business values down, profits are down. Meanwhile, residents' values are up five percent. And this year, business values are down lower than they were last year. So this trend has not reversed itself. This is not sustainable. It cannot sustain itself, the way that it's going. So when you have a realistic solution to a problem that you know must be solved, is it prudent to say, no, thank you, and wait until you get something that everyone can agree on?
Yes.
That is the essence of the decision that faces the council tonight. As we learn from the two thousand and eleven decision, sometimes, when you wait for the perfect solution, it can leave you with no solution at all. And the last thought I will leave you with is that I've often said that when you have two sides, you need to try to understand the other point's view. And I, I get what you say. I can articulate your point of view, I think, as well as you can, those who don't like the project, including what you seem to think about us. I think I can articulate that, too. One thing that does bother me is that I can see that you genuinely don't want this to happen, and you think that it's better to wait as long as it takes to get the solution you want. But you cannot see that we also think, whether you agree with us or not, we think that this is a good solution for the town. We're not kissing up to any developer. This solution offers a lot of benefits to the town. It offers retail, residential, it provides parking, it provides the first higher education institution anywhere in the county, it brings the liquor license back, it provides financial benefits to the town. And the other part of what I call this integrated solution is it comes with a developer who is able and willing to do it. And that's a missing ingredient from so many offers that you get. So that's why I come out the way that I do. And while it's councils, let's council's turn now to...
Your time is up.
Thank you, Lewis. I just, I do have one little question, clarification, if you want to take to Susan's comments. By attaching the rendering as it is now, we're, we're not wedded to that design for it. We do have the, the planning board, other people, they come in, it's not etched in stone. They do that planning, but again, and stuff like that. And that's one of the reasons why the pilot isn't included in this, because there is other steps in reviewing his design, his support. So I just want to clarify that that's the case for this. So if we attach it, we can still work with the planning board and redevelopment?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's my clarification.
So...
Are we asking the question?
So, this decision, actually, your comments, actually speak to the majority of my feeling about this, having served on all three phases painfully. Look, you guys get to come here tonight and kind of see this meeting, get to go home for six years, most of us have served, trying to make this project happen. I mean, endless meetings, countless hours, to no avail. And so you've got to understand from our perspective, too, that we poured our soul into this thing, trying to make it happen. And it's not hard for most people to know that the mayor and I were on the opposite sides of this conversation in the last election cycle, we were. And I'm very much a proponent of historic preservation. I've renewed, I've done three historical homes. I've been restoring mine for the last twelve years. So I know what it's like, I know what the costs are. And it took me how I kind of see this last project fail, one more time, to kind of realize, we've got to do something different here. This isn't working. And if we keep doing the same thing over and over again to Miss Perry's building, you're going to get the same results. And so I think we're going to choose a different track, and I'm living half a block from the shadow of this thing. I will raise my children in the shadow of my decision. My brain, my parents, who are retirees, live half a block in the other direction. So it affects us like it affects everyone else who live in the Borough. And we are having to make this decision on behalf of the residents who elected us to come here and do that for them. And I feel like, through my conversations with the community, my conversations with other resident business owners and other people here, who, this is all we've got. This is everything my family has. Our three homes on Broad Street, that's everything we've got. So this is making or breaking for us, too. And, you know, in that respect, I have to make the decision that I think is what's right to move the Borough into the future. As painful sometimes as it can be, walking outside and realizing that the city needs those buildings, if I go grab a guest, they will be gone. And I recognize that. And I'll get to look out the back door of my house on Broad Street every day, one at beautiful Metro Brewster, and then next to it, you know, will be a new complex that I believe will also be equally as beautiful, albeit not historic. And so that's part of, that's the context of my decision that I have to make. I know that I've internalized that, I've thought about it, and I've spent six years thinking about it. And that's what, that experience is what forms the basis of...
Okay. Before my divorce is final, as you know, my wife is in charge of the SCORI committee, and I'm on it. But anyway, we've had a lot of discussions about this, and sleepless nights and so on. And I've had a lot of thoughts about what's going on, and, you know, I, my thinking is a little bit different from maybe some of the others here, but, you know, a hundred years ago, roughly, a little plus, it was nineteen-ten, Flemington separated from Raritan. It was prosperous. The stores were full, you had businesses downtown, you had peach factories and cut glass, and you had foundries here, and you had people who were very rich, living in these big homes that we now have. You can now look around at these big homes, you'll find that a lot of people, and a lot of you here that I know, are running out of parts of your homes that you can no longer afford evidently, to just handle that by yourself. So you rent out, and you make them into, you know, apartments or whatever. And I don't disrespect you for that, but I'm seeing how the economy has changed so much. You know, things are changing, and I think we can either, you know, I think, you see what's happened in Raritan Township, we didn't want to be part of them anymore. We had the businesses, we had everything we needed. So they had the farms. Guess what? They've got businesses now, and they've got the homes, and we are stuck with empty stores and people trying to survive here. There's got to be a solution that we can... that something must be done for Main Street. Since that decision in 2011, business values have declined by 7%. Even though the only, the total real estate in Flemington bottomed in 2013, businesses are still 7% below where they were at the time of that decision. And business valuations take into account profitability. So business values down, profits are down. Meanwhile, residents' values are up 5%. And this year, business values are down lower than they were last year. So this trend has not reversed itself. This is not sustainable. It cannot sustain itself, the way that it's going. So when you have a realistic solution to a problem that you know must be solved, is it prudent to say, "No, thank you", and wait until you get something that everyone can agree on?
Yes.
That is the essence of the decision that faces the council tonight. As we learn from the 2011 decision, sometimes when you wait for the perfect solution, it can leave you with no solution at all.
Amen.
And the last thought I will leave you with is that I've often said that when you have two sides, you need to try to understand the other point's view. And I get what you say. I can articulate your point of view, I think, as well as you can, those who don't like the project, including what you seem to think about us. I think I can articulate that, too. One thing that does bother me is that I can see that you genuinely don't want this to happen, and you think that it's better to wait as long as it takes to get the solution you want. But you cannot see that we also think, whether you agree with us or not, we think that this is a good solution for the town. We're not kissing up to any developer. This solution offers a lot of benefits to the town. It offers retail, residential. It provides parking. It provides the first higher education institution anywhere in the county. It brings the liquor license back. It provides financial benefits to the town. And the other part of what I call this integrated solution is it comes with a developer who is able and willing to do it. And that's a missing ingredient from so many offers that you get. So that's why I come out the way that I do. And while it's councils, let's council's turn now to
Your time is up.
Thank you, Lewis. I just, I do have one little question clarification. If you want to speak to Susan Agnew's comments. By attaching the rendering as it is now, we're not wedded to that design for a row. We do have the planning board, other people, they come in. It's not etched in stone. They do that planning, but again, and stuff like that. And that's one of the reasons why the pilot isn't included in this, because there is other steps in reviewing his design, of support. So I just want to clarify that that's the case for this. So if we attach it, we can still work with the planning board in redevelopment?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's my clarification.
So So this decision actually, your comments, actually speak to the majority of my feeling about this. Having served on all three phases painfully. Look, you guys get to come here tonight and kind of see this meeting, get to go home for six years, most of us have served, trying to make this project happen. I mean, endless meetings, countless hours, to no avail. And so you've got to understand from our perspective, too, that we poured our soul into this thing, trying to make it happen. And it's not hard for most people to know that the mayor and I were on opposite sides of this conversation on the last election cycle, we were. And I'm very much a pro of historic preservation. I've renewed my three historical homes. I've been restoring mine for the last 12 years. So I know what it's like, I know what the costs are. And it took me how I kind of see this last project fail one more time to kind of realize, we've got to do something different here. This isn't working. If we keep doing the same thing over and over again to Ms. Carroll, you're going to get the same results. And so I think we need to choose a different track. And I'm living half a block from the shadow of this thing. I will raise my children in the shadow of my decision. My parents, who are retirees, live half a block in the other direction. So it affects us like it affects everyone else who live in the borough. And we are having to make this decision on behalf of the residents who elected us to come here and do that for them. And I feel like through my conversations with the community, my conversations with other resident business owners and other people here who, this is all we've got. This is everything my family has. Our three homes on Broad Street, that's everything we've got. So this is making or breaking for us, too. And, you know, in that respect, I have to make the decision that I think is what's right to move the borough into the future. As painful sometimes as it can be, walking outside and realizing that the city needs those buildings. If I go grab a guess, then they'll be gone. And I recognize that. And I'll get to look out the back door of my house on Broad Street every day. One at beautiful Metro Brewster. And then next to it, you know, will be a new complex that I believe will also be equally as beautiful, albeit not disorder. And so that's part of, that's the context of my decision that I have to make. I know that I've internalized that, I've thought about it. And I've spent six years thinking about it. And that's what, that experience is what forms the basis of
Okay, before my divorce is final, as you know, my wife is in charge of the SCORI committee and I'm on here. But anyway, we've had a lot of discussions about this and sleepless nights and so on. And I've had a lot of thoughts about what's going on. And, you know, my thinking is a little bit different from maybe some of the others here. But, you know, 100 years ago, roughly, a little plus, it was 1910, Flemington separated from Raritan. It was prosperous. The stores were full. You had businesses downtown. You had peach factories and cut glass. You had foundries here. You had people who were very rich, living in these big homes that we now have. You can now look around at these big homes, you'll find that a lot of people, and a lot of people here that I know, are running out of parts of your homes that you can no longer afford evidently, to just handle that by yourself. So you rent out and you make them into apartments or whatever. And I don't disrespect you for that, but I'm seeing how the economy has changed so much. You know, things are changing and I think we can either, you know, I think if you see what's happened in Raritan Township, we didn't want to be part of them anymore. We had the businesses, we had everything we needed. So they had the farms. Guess what? They've got businesses now and they've got the homes and we are stuck with empty stores and people trying to survive here. There's got to be a solution that we can work on together. And it's not, you know, maybe you're hearing something from me that you've never thought of or maybe you've all thought about it, but you don't want to really think about it. Just, you know, you don't want to face reality. But, you know, people come here and, you know, you know, I see all these people out there. You're not from Flemington, you're from Hunterdon County. You know what? How about if we send back, we'll take on this project, but we're going to send you home with each committee. We have 26 municipalities. How about each municipality takes $1 million for 40 years of debt and gives it to us to build the hotel and fix up the area the way we want it? Is that what you want? You're not going to go back with that because they're running out of town. You know, I know that. So we're going to do what we have to do. And the hotel's been empty for 10 years, less or minus here. And if something isn't done, another 10 is going to go by. And that's all I got to say. We've got to do something. And it may not be the best solution, but we just can't go on like this for another 10 years. You know, I'm getting older. I started out here just a young guy. Now, you know, 10 more years, who knows what I'm going to be?
We're going to run into the council in 10 years. Here we go. Mark, anything? Kim? No, no comment.
Call them all, please.
Mr. Gorman?
Yes.
Mr. Hayne? Sleepwood? Mr. Swingle?
Yes.
Stilly? Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. The next resolution is number 66, which is the first step
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. What are they going to do if there's a fire? What are they going to do?
Do they get a truck down there?
No, Van Buren. Van Buren, get a man.
The Pattersons.
That's all we have to do.
What's that?
See, what happens is they hear about so the 1978 dis supply
That would be a case that affects the appearance of that.
Okay, do you want to see the table? Okay, our next resolution is 2017-66. This is authorizing and directing the paying board to undertake a preliminary investigation to determine whether an area of the downtown district could meet the statutory criteria for a redevelopment area pursuant to local law and housing law. And this is the first step that we will take in the legally defined process of how we intend to do this for. So do we have a motion on this resolution?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is resolution number 67, authorizing a contract with Max Span Real Estate and Auction Company to market the borrowed loan property of 144 Main Street. Now, I'm going to ask a couple of questions of council here and Barry for me to comment on this. We only got one response on the RFP for Realtors. And this one is offering once 10%, which would be Why don't you go through that with us and give us your thoughts on that, please?
Max Span proposal, was the only proposal that was submitted, is to set up a traditional marketing plan to attract buyers. He would set up an auction and send out materials to attract buyers from auctions right up front. So that's a little bit different than I think was being anticipated. A little not by the statute. Also, the statute, the local contract law, says specifically that there's a maximum 5% admission that can be paid for real estate over by the government entity. What Max Span poses is that all the 10% premium will be paid by the buyer, not the municipality. So therefore, the statute doesn't apply to it. And it's legal in the monitoring of the statute. But of course, that affects how much the buyer is likely to bid for the property that paying a 10% premium on top of the purchase price. So that has to be factored in the decision. So he can accept this bid if he wants to and go to auction and then it would be a 10% premium. We could approach him about maybe capping it at 5% or you would be capped at fewer than it. Where you reject the bids, you know, you have the right to reject all bids and then, you know, go out and bid one more time if you want to. So go to the auction.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any additional legal advice, one way or another? It sounds like you're saying it's legal and it's just up to us if we want to do this or not.
That's exactly right. Because it's practical effect of the 10% premium.
I'm going to ask council's opinion on this. I ran through that entire book that they gave us and I had a, maybe not problems, but some questions about how well I think this might work out. And I would personally maybe favor taking another meeting to consider what we want to do with this. But if council, if you've all read it and you're good with it and ready to vote on it, we can do that. So let me just ask you, do you want to move forward with this or you want to take a breather and think about it? You would? Okay, all right. You're okay with that? Okay, then. Does have a motion, please, then, to table this agenda item? Second, thank you. All right, that was Brian and John, please. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Gorman?
Yes.
Mr. Hayne?
Yes.
Mr. Swingle?
Yes.
Mr. Swingle?
Yes.
Stilly?
Yes.
Okay.
I do have a question. We were thinking about it being asked now, considering what's been said here. The day was called for the action, it's going to be a private conference tomorrow.
I think, well, quite frankly, I think that you should reject all bids, ideally one bid. In that case, it would only issue the RFP and then go out RFP again without this RFP being pending. You know, why is it not RFP?
But if we did that, we could ask this Realtor to still participate?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. So we're not necessarily rejecting them, we're just saying, well, we want to look a little harder. Okay. All right, we'll do that, then.
But I guess I consider it's about the time because we have to table that, because we have to bring that again to the everybody.
You don't necessarily have to bring it up again. You table something. Maybe with a specific thing you're happy to vote it on again, it could be table forever in essence. And it goes away at the end of the year. A new area is conceived, so whether it be tables that, you know, those are part of the trade again. But I don't think this could form a table and go out RFP tomorrow with this proposal, you know, still being there. I think that maybe what we can do if you finally send that out RFP, reject all bids, let this, let this, we take that another bid from that along with other bids that like to say maybe 5% doesn't sell that. But you want to consider, but you're hoping for it all to live still.
So procedurally, you send to the guys? Do you think you can reject?
You can go for reject. And if you don't have RFP, that's about right.
All right. Okay, so then we will, okay. So we are retracting the motion and second to table it and then we would be moving to reject the bids, which means, with that, let's reissue an RFP?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay, so we'll modify the motion then?
That's correct.
For that?
You voted on a motion.
The table?
Yeah, you voted to table it. So let's, you have another motion to reconsider and to reject all bids.
Are you?
I don't think so.
Can they vote again?
No.
I have a question.
Okay. If you didn't vote, I apologize.
Okay, so they actually, they maybe send in the motion and second.
Right.
So So then we will ask a motion then to reject the bids and which means we could go out for another RFP. Correct?
Brian goes, Brian?
I'm going with John second.
John second.
All right, you do. All right.
Then you have the motion.
All right, then the motion is just to reconsider that until, to rescind that, rescind that vote and vote again as stated. All right, so Brian and John, all right, so call it all again, please. This is, yes, this resolution is to rescind the one we just voted on and modify it to say that we are rejecting the bids and we will go out for the RFP now to try to seek a wider, you know, response.
You've got Brian?
Brian and John, yes.
Mr. Gorman?
Yes.
Mr. Hayne?
Yes.
Mr. Swingle?
Yes.
Mr. Swingle?
Yes.
Stilly?
Yes.
Okay, and my apologies to all for the back and forth on that one. Is Bill Hans here?
Here.
Bill, hey, okay. Now we come to three budget-related items. The first is resolution number 71, which is the Flemington Borough Self-Examination for 2017. I will do this, Bill can correct me if I'm wrong, play this here. When we reach a certain level of credibility with the state, they let us do a self-examination. I think it's for, what, two years out of three, is it?
Correct.
Where we can certify ourselves that we are following the appropriate procedures for developing the budget. Those specific procedures are listed in the resolution and it simply certifies that we have properly developed this budget so that we can introduce it. So unless there are any questions or if Bill needs to clarify anything that was said, can we have a motion, please, for this? Okay, that's Kim moved, Mark seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gorman?
Yes.
Mr. Hayne?
Yes.
Mr. Swingle?
Yes.
Mr. Swingle?
Yes.
Stilly?
Yes.
Thank you. And the next one is also one we do every year, ordinance number six? That doesn't look like the written verifi. Anyway, the ordinance is to establish a cap bank for calendar year 2017. Bill, how are many people? You want, can you tell us from up there so everybody can hear this? I can do it with a mic if you don't want to. Just explain the cap bank and what you're voting on.
We're allowed to go increase our tax revenue by 2% without getting additional approvals from the state. So if we don't go up to the 2% without submitting it and also it's, there's an appropriation cap, which means we're allowed to increase our appropriation every year by 4% for whatever we don't need to have without submitting it for two years. So this resolution is just saying that we do comply with those caps and any leftovers are allowed to make any use of the information next to the limits.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. And we've done this every year since I've been on council, so it's fairly routine as far as process. So unless there are any other questions about it, can we have a motion on this resolution? Okay, that's Kim and John. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gorman?
Yes.
Mr. Hayne?
Yes.
Mr. Swingle?
Yes.
Mr. Swingle?
Yes.
Thank you. That's a resolution. Oh, wait. Who? Is that an ordinance? It says ordinance. It is an ordinance. So we have a public hearing on that at the next meeting, I guess. Okay. All right, thank you for, thank you for the clarification. Okay, moving on to ordinance 68, which is the introduction of the 2017 municipal budget. There is no public hearing on the budget tonight, so I will provide just very brief, high-level details about the budget. You know, we've been working diligently every week on this since the beginning or right after the reord meeting. But thank council for all the time they've put into it. The budget that we will be introducing for adoption has total appropriations of $5,527,336, which is 1.08% above last year's budget. The municipal tax rate under this budget would increase by 1.8 cents. That's 1.8 cents. By comparison, last year's increase was 3.4 cents. And this rate increase amounts to $47 per year of additional tax on an average home valued at $259,900. By comparison, last year's increase was $87 on an average home. So we feel like this is a good, a good news story, we think, with all the constraints that apply to it. So we will introduce the budget for now and then in two weeks, we will expect that we will have the public hearing and the vote. We have a motion to introduce the budget, please. Okay, that's Kim moved, it, Brian seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gorman?
Yes.
Mr. Hayne?
Yes.
Mr. Swingle?
Yes.
Mr. Swingle?
Yes.
Stilly?
Yes.
Thank you. And resolution number 70 And Resolution Number Seventy, Animal Control, Brooke, why don't you take that one please?
Um, yeah. Um, as you know, we've had some, had an issue with our animal control officer, and he had transferred his contracts over to St. Keepers. And as many of you are aware of the work that St. Keepers does in the community with their shelters, they have a spay and neuter program, they have a TNR program. They're very proactive about helping animals in the community, and we actually think this will provide better services. They're offering us the same rate as the animal control investigative services did, and they can fill out the rest of the year. There were some contractual obligations with ACIS that had to honor the contract, and the option to switch to St. Keepers with the no penalty to the borough was kind of, kind of a no-brainer, and we're actually pretty confident we'll have even better level of service than we did with ACIS.
Thank you, Brooke. Oh, just to follow up to where we started last meeting, so can we have a motion to adopt this order, resolution, please?
Hold on a second.
Okay, Brooke and Kim, roll call please.
Mr. Gorman?
Yes.
Mr. Hay?
Yes.
Mr. Swingle?
Yes.
Mr. Swingle?
Yes.
Mr. Still?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, now we come to two ordinances with public hearings. First is Ordinance Number 2017-Three, Revising the Ordinance Governing Taxis in Flemington Borough. Councilman Hay, take it away with the public hearing.
We need a motion to order the public hearing for the revised taxi ordinance, 2017-Three.
Second.
Okay. Mark and Brooke.
Mr. Gorman?
Yes.
Mr. Hay?
Yes.
Mr. Swingle?
Yes.
Mr. Swingle?
Yes.
Mr. Still? Yes.
Thank you, public hearing is open on this ordinance. Uh, if you have any questions or comments, walk them up, and please confine them to this ordinance. Uh, yes, this is second.
I don't really need to stand up now that there's nobody left. My name is Maria Duncan, everybody calls me Bonnie. Um, I live in Lebanon, I do have our offices both in Maryland and in Flemington Borough. My question is about this ordinance, or the change to this ordinance, is looking at, and perhaps speaking for folks that either do not have a vehicle, or are not able to drive their vehicles, trying to understand with such limited transportation options that we have both in the borough and beyond, how reducing the number of taxis is beneficial to the community?
The reason this is coming out is, is there's a couple things. Recently, over the last couple of months, there's been a lot of issues with the taxis operating illegally in the town of, or in the borough of Flemington. So this ordinance is to revise the charges and fees that are associated with operating a taxi service in Flemington. Uh, by reducing the amount and number of taxis, it's easier for us to track of who's, who's legal, who's not. Raising the fees of those who operate, because right now, it's cheaper for these people to pay the fee and continue to operate illegally. So now, we're paying the fine and operating illegally. So now, we're raising the fines up so that they'll hopefully think twice. We'll be able to enforce the new ordinance with the new fees and stuff, so that we can provide the, a safe service to the people of the community. Because there's a lot of people operating illegally, non-licensed drivers, non-insured drivers, drivers that have been non-picking up alcohol for people, bringing stuff back, so there's a lot of stuff that's, we all see day to day, that goes on behind the scenes, or if I can think of that stuff.
Just to supplement that, certainly question, Bonnie, if I can, because I was in a meeting, because it was discussed, um, with the police chief and the clerk, you know, who really, were behind the limits with ten. I think, and I don't want to misstate it, that there might be about thirteen, fourteen, fifteen licenses that are out there right now. I think it might be thirteen, fourteen. And, um, it has gotten to the point where regulation of them has become very difficult. And so, they felt that by limiting, limiting it to ten, they'd be better able to monitor the taxis that are actually out there and control them. Uh, some of the taxis that have licenses that we're not operating right now, by doing it as can as a statute, or auction off the licenses, would make it more valuable, and actually, potentially increase the number of taxis that are operating within the borough. Uh, so the end result, I hope, is that there will be more taxis, more ability to control the taxis that are actually operating. So that's why the decision made as the police chief and clerk, to try a limit of ten. Uh, I will say that if it turns out that the anticipation, there may actually be more taxis, they're going to increase it one percent in the result. But if it does not turn out, that can only be revisited in the future.
How would you get it for it?
Because, because it actually would be more expensive to get a license, to offer this theory. And if you don't spend more money to get a license and operate your taxis, you could have your taxis operating in London. And makes more, you know, and that's where the rationale.
I think the condition, there's two different kinds of licenses, there's an owner's license, that's limited to ten. And those, there's a driver's license, those are unlicensed, so you don't necessarily have to operate under date, that's unlimited. So we're hoping that you can just spend owner's licenses better, and then they will have unlimited driver's license.
Okay, alright.
So we're hoping that things will be more accessible, and answer date on how we were going to meet any, uh, on, on the, uh...
Thank you. Any other questions, Leslie?
Yeah, or comments?
Your name, please.
Other individuals with comments, or any, uh, great way to express yourself, if you'd ever please?
Can you speak up, I can't even hear you over here.
Oh, sorry, I'll keep going. Um, I wanted to unpack with the church, stress our concern that less taxis will impact the community that we serve, and we are contributing, and through our whole charity and community. We see quite a few families that use taxis to get to church, and we also help people when they can't get a taxi, yet they have to go. I initially worked at ShopRite, and I studied taxis for clean-up, and I'm on my third week. So it was quite a lot of people that handled taxis in this area. And then I also want to make a comment myself, not as a church. But my understanding of what you're saying is probably is, is that people who are not taxis are acting as taxis. So they're going to regulate the people who are taxis? This doesn't seem to add up to it, because you can't see taxis who work taxis, but they're not the ones causing the problem. So would it seem, coming from the history of everything, that we catch people who aren't taxis, who are causing the problem, right?
Well, the taxis will all have license numbers on the back that they operate, so that if the controller will have a list of these, say, ten, ten operating companies that are allowed to operate, so they'll be able to see if Joe's Taxi Service is on the list. If you can see Joe's Taxi Service going down the street, and they're not on the list, then they know they're operating illegally.
Well, it's standard sixteen, I guess I don't want to say the last one's reducing the number, but if none of those numbers are causing the problem, it seems that maybe having a system, actually, if you got a mark in your get file, like you had a decision to produce taxis, when clearly, the amount of people activity shows a fine and problem, you only have more people that are advocating towards doing the taxis than fewer people that, that's what I mean.
If we have, if we have less owners, if we manage to regulate and make sure that they're running fine and they're not making illegal, they have unlimited drivers, so if you make sure that that's how we regulate.
Less owners, like, if your current owners aren't the problem, I still don't see watching that. So is there some people that are all current ownership that you're not liking, or?
There are some issues that will resonate with licensing. There are some issues that will resonate with current licenses, um, that we're trying to address with other sections of this ordinance change, that we're changing. Yes?
One of the, one of the things I came up out of this is that, say, a taxi, a licensed taxi is charging $5 to pick up somebody. One of these non-registered ones, they say, have to pick up for $3. So they're undercutting the person who has the insurance, who has the license and stuff. So it's to basically corral that stuff, so everybody's operating, operating legally.
Yes, I still don't see how the person who's operating illegally, just like a legal person, reducing illegal people somehow to retail to illegal person in the first place, I don't see that.
I believe the thinking I'm hearing is that if the legal, if the legally operating services know that they're not going to be undercut by holding, by holding others, then they could add to the drivers, that's what I, that's what I think I'm hearing.
Then how are you going to stop any of that, and how are you going to act in any way or acting with that? I think the point of it being more of a problem, I think, that's, that's, you know, I'm saying?
Well, I'm not the one who works the closest to them, so.
Right, you're not going back to people who are costing dollars, going back to people who are...
If I can interject, we are not after these people that are causing the problem, but they're also doing these, are raising the fines, which cause the illegal ones, the ones that we do go after, to pay a higher fine, and they're going to stop you. The reason we want to eliminate to a number of ten taxis is so it's manageable for the police department in Borough Hall, not to have twenty different drivers, twenty different companies come in, because it is overwhelming to the, to the clerk, to myself. So by eliminating the number handed, that it provides, you don't want to have twenty burger points, twenty burger restaurants that have, right?
Right.
You want to have five or ten, something manageable, same thing with taxis, it's going to increase their income as well. So it's something that they're interested in as well, we do.
Okay, so you are going to have a component that penalizes the illegal.
Absolutely, and that's what this is, it's going to increase the fines. Yeah, like, like the councilman said, right now, it's cheaper to pay a fine than actually, uh, get the license, you know? So they're going to raise the fine where it's cheaper to get the license and be regulated and called under the ordinance.
Okay.
Briefly, before we're submitted, and for the, 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 they just operate in the, you know?
Can I make a question to you?
Go ahead.
Is that possible? Because, um, I'm standing up by the municipal first officers, either they're pending or doesn't pass, that Uber that cannot be regulated by, um, taxi. It, it, I just got, you know, I'm not sure whether it's dated all the way through, or if it's been introduced, but something addressing Uber that, that issue outside of the scope of any of this ordinance.
Obviously, it's a lot of, you think they're talking to the board, or, 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 yeah.
Yeah, maybe, I'm sure.
If they make addresses to the concerned, they have the sole supply.
Okay, Bonnie?
Just one last, one last question, so when you're raising the fees for the number of taxi companies that you want to keep, will it be a level, because we may increase that to be, that's just going to be taxed onto all of the passengers, so it'll be...
It's the fine, it's the fine.
Okay, alright.
The license will be by auction, as now it's, uh, as it's qualified back for the, for the RFP, so a holder's license will be by auction, or short.
Okay, so any other questions or comments about this ordinance? Okay, we have motion to close the public hearing then?
So move.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Gorman, Kim, roll call please, Sally.
Mr. Gorman?
Yes.
Mr. Hay?
Yes.
Mr. Swingle?
Yes.
Mr. Swingle?
Yes.
Still? Yes.
Thank you, and next we come to what? Oh, yes. Okay. Need a motion on the, motion to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Gorman?
Yes.
Mr. Hay?
Yes.
Mr. Swingle?
Yes.
Mr. Swingle?
Yes.
Mr. Still? Yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, ordinance number five, public hearing on ordinance amending chapter seven, titled Traffic Section Schedule Three, Parking Time Limited on Certain Streets.
Uh, we need, I guess, open much five. Uh, open a public hearing, ordinance 2017-5.
Second.
Yep.
Okay. Brian, John, I have a second, I have a second, roll call please.
Mr. Gorman?
Yes.
Mr. Hay?
Yes.
Mr. Swingle?
Yes.
Mr. Swingle?
Yes.
Still? Yes.
Any questions or comments on this? It's adding four spaces across from Borough Hall, so this has parking for always.
Fifteen minutes.
I'll make thirty in the morning, I'll score thirty in the afternoon, and after that. Any questions on that?
Can you speak up?
This is, this is to add parking on, uh, Quarter Street, right outside Borough Hall,
fifteen-minute parking spots for, uh, for vehicles. And then also, which is not tied to this, the Borough Lot Looking to reconfigure the Borough assigned parking spots to potentially two spots, and then two public spots in the lot, which had come out from a prior council meeting. So this is to add parking right outside Borough Hall for somebody who's already into do business in and out real quick.
And how will the school operation impact that? Because very frequently, people, if you come between this hour and this hour, you can't park on that street at all. And I don't quite understand that, because parking there doesn't really compete with bus traffic.
That's why we're changing, that's why we're changing, to add it.
We're adding it because it's not there now.
We're providing additional visitor parking to get into Borough Hall.
Yes.
Four spaces on the street, right across from Borough Hall.
And that will not be precluded between this hour and this hour longer?
Nope.
That's the only street that's being affected?
Yes.
Any other questions on this one?
Let's, I would like to ask, so, because there's something about the, so let's continue to enforce the existing limitations. Chief, let's keep going. Checkways are placed for the tennis courts on Elwood, um, between the months of, of, maybe April. I still need to readd that, but it will be, yeah, okay.
Alright, yeah, roll, roll, roll.
Yes.
Just literally, does there ever been an issue with that, that, that parking?
We're looking, we're reviewing that, we had got a list at the last council meeting, uh, to sit down with the chief, potentially adding some spots, but that's under review right now, so right now, nothing's, nothing's being added.
Where is it looking at?
It's being reviewed, we're not doing anything with it, we're just reviewing it, looking at what's there. If we, if we need to add some additional spots, it's been brought to our attention, we should increase a couple handicap spots, so it's, it's being looked at.
All the time, and?
Yeah, different spots of the town, yes.
It's basically more.
That's it, you have a question?
Yeah, that's a driver's, it's in North Main Street, and I guess it's more of a general parking thing that maybe should, that, adjust this offline. Why does North Main Street have no parking between 1:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m.?
Unfortunately, we need to decline this public hearing.
That's excellent, that's what I was asking, is this, other parking should be...
Okay, now, fair, fair question, uh, we need to decline this, anything else on this ordinance? Okay, motion to... Motion closed. Roll call here.
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Gorman?
Yes.
Mr. Hay?
Yes.
Mr. Swingle?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Still? Yes.
And motion, need a motion to adopt the ordinance. Okay, Mark and Kim, alright, roll call please.
Mr. Gorman?
Yes.
Mr. Hay?
Yes.
Mr. Swingle?
Yes.
Mr. Still? Yes. Still? Yes.
Thank you, and moving on, do we have an attorney's report, Barry? Thank you, and need a motion then for the payment of the bills. Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Gorman?
Yes.
Mr. Hay?
Yes.
Mr. Swingle?
Yes.
Mr. Still? Yes. Still?
And does anyone have a need at this point for an executive session? See none, motion to adjourn. Okay, Brian, Mark, and everyone else, okay, alright, roll call on that one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Swingle?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a, 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 I